Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Lee, Vice Chair of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority, being held today, March 12, 2025. This meeting is being held via Zoom video conferencing, and the board is here in person. The time is 1:02 PM. I would now like to ask for a moment of silence and reflection on this historic date. Today's agenda is our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would like to just view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website linked to Facebook Live. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent input on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of every meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of the quorum to allow the board to complete the business report. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening or abusive language during the board meetings. This includes loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting immediately. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in you being barred from speaking at future board meetings. We appreciate your interest in the matter before us today, and thank you in advance for bodying by these rules of conduct. At this time, I would ask for a roll call to determine a quorum.
Denise Blackson?
Present.
Thank you. Rosa Berbridge? Libra Clay?
Present.
Thank you. Jim Dickerson?
Present.
Thank you. Ronnie Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Katrina Jones?
Present.
Chris Murphy?
Present.
Jennifer Reed? Teresa Silla?
Present.
Raymond Skinner? And Vice Chair Melissa Lee?
Present.
You have approval.
I would like the Commissioners to consider the minutes of the February 12, 2025 board meeting. Are there any comments or changes? Motion?
So moved?
All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Next, we'll have the Executive Director's Report provided by our Executive Director, Keith Cattigan.
Wow, what a week. Say the least. But things are continuing to put you along. We've had an opportunity to sort of reflect on past year in terms of staff and work that we've done. I must admit, it's been quite a bit of work. She had six months reporting to you guys. Nice base time reading. But as you can see, the staff are working extremely hard since we got here in order to be able to sort of build that foundation for us to now take this to another level, pivot a little bit in certain areas, and sort of tweak things in order to improve. So hopefully, over the next couple of months, you're going to see the performance improve, number one, but also probably changes in how we deal with certain programmatic activities, including new staff members coming aboard, just so you know. But with that, obviously, the utility utilization rate for public housing is at 84% now, and we're looking to continue to increase that. We did a inventory review at the end of the year, which brought it down a little bit because we had to link up the systems between pick and the yardie system. So I noticed that heard some questions early on, but it was just a cleanup effort that we would normally do within the year anyway, because sometimes good stuff will hold too, and we want to make sure the systems are working. But we're back on the right track, feel good about where we are. We've been doing about maybe 20 to 15 of these steps a week over the last couple of weeks. If you notice, just may take a look at the table of the leasing summary. Our number of units went down from 79 to 77, and that was because of the Rad conversions for the Henderson Ridge as well as off the Kappa. So it wasn't like the unit just vanished, it's just a subsidy swap, so they come out of the ACC camp. But other than that-
Actually, can I say-
Yes, sir.
So do those numbers then, are they reflected in the voucher chart under Rad? That were those units that should be go- Because I think that number did go up, and I assume that was the case, but I just want to make sure.
In terms of the voucher program, we're at 9% utilization right now. So, and we're heading north, continue to see quite a few people in the Chinatown office, and the number dropped a little bit, but still, the fact that we're making ourselves available. We also, just so you all know, we do a monthly meeting with advocates to talk about concerns. They bring specific individuals to us so that we can solve their problems, and we do it once a month, and ironically, we do it the day before the board meeting. So to make sure that we try to get some problems out of the way. But more importantly, like I told some of the advocates yesterday, I said, listen, we do it because the best thing I can do right now, until we get better at being more effective and efficient, is that make ourselves available to people, so that we can try to help them as best we can. I know we get some concerns, issues, the complaints about, you know, we're still not servicing everybody the way that we should, and we're going to, and we are, but we are servicing people. I just want people to understand that, and if I could solve everybody's problems at one time, I really would. But, you know, but we are working hard to get there, so. One of the highlights of the apprenticeship program for this year started in February, so we onboarded one or more participants, which is a good thing. We hired all of the candidates from last year's, our last class, so it was a wonderful opportunity for our residents to become employed, you know. Also, C3 kids, I got to highlight those guys because they did a youth hygiene huddle, and people understand about hygiene these days, not that they don't understand about hygiene, but it's important to be able, you know, to help our young kids understand the importance of it, number one. And in fact, the C3 kids is branching out more, not only with just the medical services they provide for our seniors, but also reaching the youth now, so. And then something else I wanted to add. Oh, and so we have a, we created a lease substation at Greenleaf because Chief Reese, looking at the numbers and the crime rate, they agreed to work with MPD, and we created a substation there. So, and it's allowed us to have a better police presence, especially at the start of the year, because Greenleaf tends to have a lot, a lot of properties tend to have some activity. Blue and not home, you don't want to jinx anybody, but so Chief Reese is proud of that, and he wanted me to announce that because that's the kind of guy that he is. With that, I know you guys may have some questions for us, so.
Yes.
Yes. Lots of them. Well, actually, not lots of them. First and foremost, great appreciation for the monthly report and the details. I noticed that we switched up how we're reporting out on voucher utilization, whether that's the federal vouchers or the local LRSP vouchers. I appreciate the tables, the level of detail that you're providing for us. I love it. Thank you. Now-
Let me wipe my brow. Chewed me out a couple of months ago about that, and I'm like, director, I'm not happy with you, right?
Well, you know, let me keep going. Yes, well, accolades first. Now, there are some critical pieces of data that you are providing on the HCVP side that I want to see on the LRSP side. So, and I'm walking through these so that we're all on the same page about them, okay? So, on the HCVP side, I love that you are accounting for rent reasonableness and the impact of that on the voucher side of things. So I would like to see, because you are also doing rent reasonableness for the LRSP side as well. I want to make sure I'm understanding what rent reasonableness looks like on the LRSP side as well. So I'm assuming the data that's provided under the federal program, Housing Choice Voucher for Rent Reasonableness, is specific to the vouchers, right? So I want that same data for LRSP because you're doing rent reasonableness for LRSP as well.
So just really quick, just to clarify, because I see rent reasonableness under the local side.
Oh, do you? Oh, then I must have missed that. I'm sorry. Okay, my apologies about that. What I don't see, what I see on the HCVP side is also related to the application for families exiting FRSP. So you walk us through each of the application steps that you are responsible for, and you walk us through, like, how many you are doing and processing for those different steps, week by week, so that we have a sense of what's happening for the month. I think that's actually very critical for LRSP as well. We need to understand how those applications are being processed at DC Housing Authority, how many of them are getting to you, so that we can understand the rate at which they are moving through your process and the piece that you're responsible for. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Teresa, can I say, are you, you're looking for, I'm sorry, I'm on page 149. You're looking for more on the top of that box. You're looking, you're asking, you're saying, in addition to what's here, you're asking for a few other pieces of information?
No, I'm asking for this table-
Oh, for local.
-to be replicated for local.
Got it.
And I want to, you know, and I've said this several times, I think, if nothing, I'm consistent. I'm especially concerned about the DHS MOU. The 43% utilization on that front. I might be getting the numbers wrong, but I think they're actually up to 48, 48% utilization. I want to understand from the DC Housing Authority's side, how, when are you receiving applications? How quickly are you processing them? I like the chart that's on the HCVP side, and I'm assuming that replicating that is easier, is the easiest thing for y'all to do, if that's a fair assumption. And if it's not, if you want to visualize that data or present that data differently, that's fine too. I'm open to that, but I would like to see the application data. Now, the other piece that you are responsible for after you process the application is the RFTA processing pieces. So I wanted that same level of detail for the LRSP applications as well. I think those are the two components that the Housing Authority is responsible for. I think if you all had an opportunity to listen to my performance oversight hearing, Councilmember Robert White was calling for a summit, and my contention to him is the fact that we have processed families exiting FRSP with the kind of speed that we have ultimately, because it was a slow beginning, but we are rocking and rolling. You have knocked it out the park at this point. And so I've told him, I don't think we need a summit. We just need to focus in on the data points, make sure that DHS is responsible and accounting for the steps that they're responsible for, and make sure you are accounting for the steps that you are responsible for. And processing applications and the RFTA package, as well as rent reasonableness, are those three areas that I think are most important for us to focus in on. And so I'm requesting you give us the exact same data for LRSP as you are for HCVP.
And one thing you should know, Commissioner, so Nicole and I met with, I can direct to Pierre, and Jen Savasco. Yeah, so, but we've met with them twice over the last month to talk about us meeting more, to make sure that we're involved, particularly when I hear that people say that my staff are not holding up their end of the bargain or doing what is supposed to go in a timely manner. So we're going to start meeting every two weeks to make sure that we're involved too and clear out any bottlenecks that we have, just so you know.
I appreciate that. Right now, it feels like there's a lot of finger pointing. It's not mine, it's the other agency and vice versa. And so I think it's very important to be clear about what the data says relative to the steps that you're responsible for.
Um, my turn. Can I just ask a couple of questions just about the FRSP transition program? Anton, maybe these are best for you, but, I mean, from what I'm seeing here, it seems like it's, there's a lot of success here. So can I, can I sort of tell you what I'm seeing, and you tell me if I'm reading it right? I mean, what I'm seeing is 1,095 applicants, sort of the people who were in FRSP who needed to transition out, and we had, can you remind me, was it 1,200 vouchers? 1,300 that we dedicated for this. So already, that's good news, where we can meet everybody's need. Of those, I think this is saying that 911 of those applications were fully considered and approved, which, I'm no mathematician, but that's a pretty high percentage. So that's impressive, and I just, I know, I can only imagine how much work went into that on your side and on the DHS side and resident side, so that seems really encouraging. And then starting to make real good progress with, of those, I guess roughly 911 approved, 162 were actually leased up, and job done. 206 are in the process of leasing up. The bigger issue, perhaps not a surprise, because it's consistent with how we see on other sides of the voucher, is the number of vouchers that are out there but are not yet, have not yet identified a unit, and that's 664. Is that, did I get that right? Am I telling that story the right way? Okay. Right, that's, that is, that's great progress. And then, so I guess the follow-up question, and I was, this was the first time I noticed the Nanma K waiting list initiative. I think this is maybe good news. So are we, we've now opened up, we're now going back to the voucher waiting list? No, not yet, so. Okay, that was the first, the ones that we'd opened up before we did this, okay. So I guess the question then is, when is the right time to consider whether we are ready to reopen the waiting list, or just, yeah, to reopen the waiting list?
You mean to do another poll?
Do another poll, thank you, yes, to do another poll, yes.
Wow, so. How do I explain, so. It really depends on the lease sub success rate, right? So we're constantly watching it until I had time all the time, because you've got a lot to move apart, right? You've got the vouchers, and then you got, you got your EOPs, people that come off the program, which we average about 55 a month, and then you have ports that port out. And I was telling Anton, I was-
Oh, right, outside of DC.
Really got to watch where we are monthly, because the balance is to try to end up at 100% by the end of the year, which we probably won't, but still, what you don't want to do is either underlease or overlease. And the ports are important because they tend to get absorbed every year, at the end of the year, by whoever, how the authority is, where they are, because that increases their numbers. And then you got the EOPs, so the long, the long and short answer is, we probably won't know, I probably say until maybe like about May, June. And another thing too, Commissioner, that, and figure out what Hunter's going to do with funding. So, so we've really got to be careful, I told him, I said, keep your eye on this number moving. So we're probably not going to touch anything in terms of that other batch, at least until May or June, once we figure out what Hunter's going to do, number one, and making sure that we don't overlease, number two.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, and I think at one point I had seen that it was a pretty complicated model, trying to sort of figure out how do you stay within the right number. I, you probably understated how complicated that model is. But, so yeah, okay, that's, that makes sense. That's, I think that's a good decision, it's a responsible decision. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for our Commissioners who are remote? I think we'll transition to resident testimony and non-resident testimony. The comment period permits residents, housing-
Yeah, I would, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? This is Jim Dickerson, Commissioner Dickerson. Director Skinner and anybody else, I'm just curious, as now we're struggling with a billion-dollar hole in the district budget coming. I know, I don't want to get way into the weeds of that, but I just wonder what you see as the challenges that the department's going to have as we go down the road here with this, if the Senate holds up what the House has done.
Senate holds up, you mean if the Senate approves it or they just, they don't?
If the Senate happens to approve, the DC, we have no idea, because we don't know if the cuts are going to affect us or not.
But it, we're going to cut a billion dollars from the DC budget, potentially, but we don't know how that will get implemented.
Right. Any other questions, comments?
Comment period present, permits residents, housing choice voucher participants, and public witnesses who have signed up to present to the board for three minutes. If you have both general comments and comments on the revolution, you will have three minutes to complete your full testimony. Then we will move to the non-public, non-resident public testimony. We are-
So first, we're going to call on former Commissioner Kenneth Counsel.
Good afternoon, can you hear me, everyone?
We can, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to speak on last week's oversight hearing. Everyone took an oath that they would tell the truth, but I find it not to be truthful. Director just said something about the vouchers, but right now, as we're speaking factually, there is a problem over at Arthur Kappa with their plumbing, and the seniors are asking to be removed in that area, and no one has helped them as of yet. The oversight hearing of last week, I sit through the whole entire thing, and I heard everyone tell lies. I've never seen anyone, I've never seen General Counsel literally take over a meeting and speak on things, and when questions was asked specifically for their shop, they had not even the answer for it. These are people's lives that you all are supposed to be helping, and it seems like the money again is not reaching the public as it should. Again, I'm hoping that you all would do the right thing, the honest thing, and there should be an audit done on the budget ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Shanta High.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, you have three minutes, Ms. High.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm doing this from my phone, so please give me a moment to pull up my testimony. Psalms 127, 1, "Unless the Lord deals the house, its builders toil in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman seeks watch in vain." Good day to everyone, I am Ms. Shanta High, advocate for the people and two-term president of the council at Park Morton. Like candy man, if you speak my name, I shall appear. Although I haven't given testimony as of late, I've been watching and listening from the shadows, and Mr. Pettigrew spoke my name when speaking to Ms. Patricia Malloy. It's like, I'd like to address the fact that Mr. Pettigrew not only said to me and my equity team that we will keep the resident councils in place so that families who have been relocated will still have representation. He has made this promise to other resident councils as well. We, the people, are tired of the rhetoric. We, the people, are tired of not being treated in the capacity that you yourselves wouldn't tolerate for you nor your family. Stop fast talking and speaking jive out of the side of your neck because we, right now, your word holds as much weight as a bucket of water with holes in it. Lastly, DCHA needs to assist any and all HCVP voucher residents who would like to own a home, especially including the handicapped, disabled, senior, and veteran community. Housing security starts with homeownership, and this is why the Park Morton Equity Plan was created, to support the people. And as I close out, I want to make sure that you all understand that the fight does not stop because I've left Park Morton. The fight will continue until the day that all of my Park Morton residents return home, and those who want to own a home, put the sign name on that dotted line. Thank you, I am the high president of the council at Park Morton.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandra Banks. Sandra Banks, as a reminder, star six to unmute yourself, once you're promoted. Moving forward. Margaret Morton? Margaret Morton?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, it's Morton, you have three minutes.
I'm sorry, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Margaret Morton, and I'm a former resident of Berry Farms. I have been denied the right to return, and I just think that is so unfair how I've been treated through this whole process. It's been a long wait. I've been waiting almost eight years to return. I've been going to all the meetings, as many as I could go to, in the seven-year process or eight-year process, if I missed four meetings, that was it because I was very trying to follow the process, because I have heard what has happened to many. So now I'm being denied the right to go back based on additional funds that I received from my job, the mayor gave out additional money because of COVID. I recently, I was told that I could add my granddaughter to my lease like a month and a half ago by my property manager, Ms. Mack at James Creek. My granddaughter came home for spring break, because this is her first year of college, and we put in, I added her to the lease and all of that. Three days later, they called and said, I can't add her to the lease. And the reason I wanted to add her to the lease, because where she was currently staying with my daughter, the place has mold, it's mold-infested, it'd been all on the news and everything, and I have medical records saying that the mold was, gave her bronchitis. So I was told with my granddaughter that I would be able to return, I would be able to live at the Asbury, that I would qualify then. It's just been so much, just lies and people passing the buck. I want to know, you know, what's going to happen to me? You know, I deserve to live somewhere nice too, you know? I've been waiting, I want to go back, I want to have somewhere nice to live. And it's just so unfair, and it hurts me to my heart that when it was time for me to go home, all doors are closing. And no matter which way I turn, the door is closing, so I don't have much understanding with housing now, and even when it comes to this e-wraps stuff. They awarded me $8,500 and something. By the time I got that money, I had made arrangements myself and paid more than half of that, but they still took the whole $8,000 and something, like, I owed them all of it. The rent legends are horrible. If you look at my rent ledger, it looks like I didn't live there for a whole year. I moved in in 2017, it's no history at all for 2018, but I have rent receipts for all of 2018, it's horrible. I believe people are stealing, I believe that. And I'm 61, and I'm barely keeping up. So I know people that's older than me are getting taken advantage of, and like someone said before, we're human beings, we deserve to be treated fairly and equal. I want to go back home, that's what I was told, it was nothing. All the documentations that I have, nothing states, nothing that income was going to be a requirement for me to go back.
Ms. Morton, I'm so sorry, no, 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 we want to hear a rescue story. We're going to have someone get back in contact with you, but thank you.
Ms. Morton's staff has been trying to reach out to you on numerous occasions, Carmen Thomas. So she sent you a couple of emails and voicemail messages in reference to this. I also personally reviewed your files, so the, not to go into anything personal, but the COVID funds are not in the income. And just to clarify, you're not denied from going, you're allowed to go back into a non-subsidized unit. Right now, the income is just over income for subsidized. But again, Ms. Thomas has been trying to reach out to you on numerous occasions about adding your granddaughter, so you can please give her a call back or email back. about adding your granddaughter, so you can please give her a call back or email back, then we can hopefully get this remedy.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Next, we have Donna Towns. Donna Towns. I'm moving forward with non-resident testimony. Next, we have Kelly Sweeney McShane.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. You have three minutes.
Thank you. So, good afternoon. I'm Kelly Sweeney McShane. I'm the CEO of Community of Hope, which is a federally qualified community health center and a provider of services for families and individuals across the homeless continuum. In two thousand twenty-four, we served almost sixteen hundred unique households, including three hundred and thirty-nine families in rapid-rehousing and two hundred and ninety-six families and a hundred and twenty-two individuals in permanent supportive housing, almost all of whom have housing subsidies through the D.C. Housing Authority. I hear regulate from clients, my staff, and other providers that the process from match to lease up is confusing, has too many barriers, and takes too long, both for LRSP and for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The last number I've seen from October is that it's taken three hundred and eighty days to get people leased up for LRSP. There are multiple meetings with providers and the Housing Authority, and while there has been some progress, there do continue to be challenges. And I'd like to propose some solutions where we can all work together to have a more efficient process to serve the clients. And we need to really use the resources that we have, and while they're available, and make sure of being very efficient. So there are three different components that I would propose, and I think you've been hearing some some other providers as well, with the goal of getting people leased up within ninety days of being matched to a voucher, whether it's federal or locally funded. So first of all, um, really continue to work on a sprint to review and approve all pending applications for both LRSP and the Housing Chouse- Chouse-Vouchers. My staff have reported that we're seeing improvement in the application process for families in rapid-rehousing, which may be a result of increased staffing. So what can we learn from that process to speed up the LRSP process? And I believe Director Silla just talked about that earlier in this meeting. Secondly, with the help of an external facilitator, I think it would be very helpful for the Housing Authority, DHS, representatives from homeless services providers, and people with lived experience to have an in-person, in-depth review of the process. It just feels like we keep getting stuck on multiple steps within the process, and how do we streamline it and have the different perspectives? I think it would be helpful to look at lessons learned from recent improvements and have the right people in the room. I don't think this needs to be a big meeting, but having a smaller with the right voices and perspectives who have perspectives on the workflows. I will show and share in just a minute one of the examples. And then thirdly, just really have leadership at the Housing Authority and DHS to uh, be, uh, follow up with recommendations and have metrics to monitor. Everything from how many applications are pending, approving, withdrawn, or denied. And just to note that we have found that applications can vary from thirteen weeks to fourteen months to get approved, and that things are withdrawn sometimes because we haven't met the ten-day uh, mark, but then clients have to restart all over again. Um, one example of why I think this in-process review is important is that documentation of lack of income for LRSP vouchers is a huge barrier. The Social Security Administration recently changed the process. Um, so you have to wait ten days to get an in-person appointment, and the online system is cumbersome. The Housing Authority only gives ten days to respond. Um, and so that the process just doesn't even work at this point. We've often gotten notice from the Housing Authority of required documents after the due date or the days of the due date. Again, if documents are not in time, it's withdrawn, and people have to start all over again. I believe DHS is taking on this process right now to have non- verify non-received of child support. Um, but it would be great and go quicker if the Housing Authority could do this. And just as a note, my staff say this information is not required for the federal vouchers, so why is it required for the local vouchers?
So I'm sorry, Ms. McSh- Mc- I'm sorry, McShan. Your time has expired. Um, but if you can go ahead, I believe we will have someone get back in contact with you regarding what you've presented today.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Next, we have Aladrondra Kane. And I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly. Aladrondra Kane. So I'm gonna move forward. Next, we have William Jordan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, on February twenty-seventh, Councilmember Nadeau issued a release concerning Park Morton NCI Phase One project based in distortions and even outright lies. Her release continued the pattern in which officials happy-talk while the lives of Park Morton residents are negatively impacted and harmed, lives which is this board and agency are bound to protect. Councilmember Nadeau claimed that of the hundred four unit, hundred and forty-two unit building includes family-supporting three-bedroom units when the project does not include such units. As a substitute for the three-bedroom units, the project includes studio units which were not designed to support the needs of Park Morton families, a fact that could, the council member covered up in her release. In her release, the council member spoke of being provided tour of the units, something Park Morton residents have been denied by the Housing Authority and the developer. Indeed, instead of the typical process in which residents are able to tour a property, pick their top unit choices, residents are being denied this right. Instead, the developer will pick the units for residents sight unseen until move-in. The only truthful thing in council member's release is that she admits that for her, this Phase One project is a vanity project, and it's for her, the needs and rights and wants of current and former Park Morton residents are secondary at best. It should also be noted that at this time, last year, residents were told move-in date for the project was August twenty-four, sending residents into a stressful scramble for paperwork, only to be told, never mind, and then later hurry up again for this end of March of this year move-in. While Councilmember Nadeau has the legal right to happy-to talk, this is a vanity vanity project without regard to the actual promises made to Park Morton residents, this Star Board has additional, a different responsibility. It has responsibility to fulfill Resolution twenty-two nineteen as well as to go and find Resolution twenty-three fifty-three and bring it in line with twenty-two nineteen. But how this board has a choice to make, it's either gonna face the problems head-on and honestly, or it's gonna continue to be part of this political game that harms residents. You have to make a choice. You cannot allow this process from one person, one agency, to mislead residents and this board silently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Next, we have Andy Wasenich.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can. You have three minutes, Mr. Wasenich.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Andy Wasenich, Policy Director at Miriam's Kitchen, the homeless service providers uh, with the mission of ending chronic homelessness here in the district. Um, before I begin, I would again like to express appreciation to Director Shaw, Deputy Director Nissa Jones, um, Hamar Gabraeus, and Allison Burdo, and all of the leadership of DCHA who continue to be responsive and gracious um, in their communications. Um, at last week's oversight hearing in front of the Committee on Housing, there was a lot of testimony, including my own, on the length of time it takes for a voucher application to be approved and for folks with vouchers to get leased up. A lot of folks, including myself, uh, cited a three-hundred-and-eighty-day timeline from voucher match to lease-up. The same issue and number were brought up many times as well by me and others at the oversight hearing for DHS. And as I stated in my testimony before this board last month and at the DHS and DCHA oversight hearings last month, that number and the problem in general does not just solely fall on the DCHA, it also falls on DHS, and it falls on the twenty-three permanent supportive housing providers. This is why Miriam's Kitchen, along with Community of Hope and several other agent-provider agencies, are urging DCHA and DHS to uh, conduct a sprint, as uh, Ms. McShane said, um, to approve all pending applications. As of last week, we understand there to be roughly two hundred and fifty pending for more than sixty days. Um, and then also with the help of an external facilitator, appropriate local program staff from DCHA and DHS, along with representatives from the homeless service providers, um, and people with lived experience, conduct a two-day in-person, in-depth process review to identify ways to improve and streamline the process. And then three, um, that leadership of DCHA and DHS commit to im- commit to implementing recommendations from the process review and to monitoring progress as a result of recommendations from the process review, including developing benchmarks and metrics uh, to be reported on. At the past two DCHA oversight hearings, I centered my testimony around a Miriam's Kitchen client who, as of the hearing in October, had been waiting four months for a voucher extension. The last week, I testified how it was another four months before that was resolved, and that it wasn't resolved at all until I had followed up on it just a few weeks ago, despite being put in touch with folks from DCHA by Councilmember White's office in October. There was no movement, and in both instances, the ball was in DCHA's court, and it got dropped. Now, I'm just using this as an example, not to point fingers, because I'm also perplexed on the DHS side as to why they aren't following up on cases that are so long delayed themselves. I know our PSH team was consistently asking for updates and not getting them. So how does it happen that there is no movement on a case for four months? At minimum, we have communication issues. But again, I'm not here to point fingers. I'm here to call for solutions, and solutions that are not simply made unilaterally by DCHA or DHS, but include the input, input of direct service providers and people with lived experience. Um, and I appreciate that the folks at DCHA are working hard and have hard jobs. I appreciate the communication that is happening with DHS. Um, but you know, when it comes down to it, we're also trying to serve the folks who are most visibly uh, homeless in our um, in our system, um, the folks living outside and in our shelters. Um, and I don't know that any of our jobs are harder than the daily realities that they face. Thanks very much for this time, um, and uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Delpilago.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Daniel Delpilago. I work with Empower DC. We work with public housing residents and voucher holders, people in the voucher process um, around the city. This afternoon, I want to bring your attention, and we've we've heard this, and it, I'm, and this is how the universe works, but we've heard quite a few issues related to the new communities initiative. Uh, this past week, I received a message from one of our members who received the letter. They reside at Richardson Dwellings, and they received a letter offering them a unit at the legacy at, um, who, let me get that name right. Um, the Legacy at Temple Courts. And uh, they weren't sure what this meant. Um, I I I look at the the letter, and it has somewhat of a cryptic line in there that says, "Your right to return to your original NCI property once redeveloped will be satisfied." All all of this i- is very confusing for folks. Um, you know, as Ms. Morton, you know, Ms. Morton testified a little earlier, she was promised from the very beginning, you're gonna come back to this wonderfully redeveloped property. And I understand there may be some misunderstandings and some issues. But nonetheless, she was promised that she would be able to return, and things have changed, and that has uh, stopped her and others from returning. So I I think it's time that something happens around new communities initiative. At the very least, an update of where we are, who is responsible for what, clarification on that. I know there's some confusion around at, you know, for example, at uh, Lincoln Heights, uh, because there's uh, some Choice Neighborhood stuff happening there as well. Um, so I think the tenants who were told some twenty years ago that they uh, that their properties were gonna redevelop and that they were gonna be able to come back are owed uh, more than 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 what is happening right now. People need to know that uh, what is happening, have some real expectations of of what will happen. And for those who were promised that they will come back, we need to make sure that they are able to come back uh, in figuring out a way to make that possible, because that 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 was the promise. I I think that was one of the tenants of um, of of the new community initiative. So with that, I want to say thank you, um, and have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Would like to share, that concludes your resident and non-resident testimony. Thank you. Next, we will have committee reports. Um. We can start on, gonna start with operations? Or maybe Jones?
So the committee on operations met on February twenty-eighth, and during that meeting, um, we had a very con- very good conversation about um, everything administrative um, with the Housing Authority, and it concluded with two resolutions being proposed. And one, the first resolution is twenty-five oh-five, which is to authorize the execution of contracts for management of the Paper Carlsberg parking lots. And I believe it's Sheila that will talk about that one, present it.
Well, Jean, you're gonna present the resolution?
Good morning, Commissioners, and Staff, and the purpose of this.
You need to come down.
Sure. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and everyone.
The purpose of this resolution is to authorize execution of a contract for the management of the Capra Carlsberg parking lots. For a period of one year, the proposed gross revenue is one-point-three million. The expenses totaling five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand with resulting in a net revenue of around seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. All of those net funds will go to DCHA, um, and I will turn it over to Jean to kind of to give us some context around the background.
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask Warren to, he's been working really closely with her, but I'm just, as uh, as Jean just stated, um, the uh, Capra's new parking lot has, Capra's parking lot has been in our portfolio for a while and has been operating without a property manager. Um, last year, so last year, we went through an RFP process to solicit a property manager to oversee the parking lot. There's a lot of interest for use of the parking lot, but we we don't have a manager, and so we've been kind of managing it ourselves. So it just made sense to to bring someone on board. So Warren, if you, anything to add or answer?
So I guess just very briefly, so we've got three lots. We have one hundred and ten spaces on Lot T, one hundred and ten spaces on Lot U, and then one hundred and eighty-seven spaces on Lot W. And so this lot, if it's operational, not only is it able to accommodate um, public parking for some some sister agencies, but it's also, it's also able to service the businesses in that area. And in addition, it's also a a agreement with the National Capitals baseball team to be able to uh, use that.
And open the floor for questions?
Any Commissioner questions uh, for our remote Commissioners?
Have there been any other uses for the lot, or it's always been just used as parking? Um, and are there any specific things that the revenue generated from the last go-to was, or does it just go to broader the agency itself?
So it's used just for parking, but eventually the spaces will be redeveloped for new housing. So right now, this use is just an interim use.
So right now, it, we've just kind of been building that in a separate bank account, uh, whatever we get, and so we've got four-point-six million right now sitting there. That's just sitting there earning interest.
It it needs to be used for affordable housing purposes.
Right, yeah, right.
It's it's not, it's not federally restricted in the same way that like our public housing funds are, but we we have to use it for agency mission purposes.
And I think in this time, uh, source of income is always a good thing.
Unfortunately, yes.
That's that motion.
Do you want to do this one? Okay. How about the joke we were doing?
You're right, you're right.
Okay. We'll do a committee report out. We'll come back and vote. Okay.
Um, I think one point of feedback was that the updates were very robust. Greatly appreciate um, the use of the temp. Greatly appreciate the use of the template, the opportunity to provide feedback and get additional information. I think the HR-related tables were very interesting to review. Maybe this is a part of the story as well, but a lot of the vacancies are in the HCBP or the voucher shop. And so hopefully, as we staff up, that will also ameliorate some of the negative complaints or the concerns that have been voiced, both by me and the constituents. But the updates, thank you so much. They've improved greatly. They are very robust, exactly what we need for our committee.
I'll pivot to Commissioner Blackson. Would you like to do a share out for resident services?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Denise Blackson. I'm the chair of the Resident Service Committee. The committee first-time meeting for this year will take place on March the twenty seventh. That will include resident leaders on that actual committee meeting. It's kind of focused around Resolution twenty five oh seven. Residents are very eager to learn about the upcoming ACOB plan and how come we keep voting on it. They want to know when will the official one come out, which have been shared sometime maybe early April it will come out. So that's currently what the resident committee is focused on. And I started an initiative under the Resident Service Committee maybe about six months ago. And this committee has been focused on safety as well as resident engagement. So it's called Block by Block. I know you've heard me share about it on the past few meetings that I have been able to attend. So I just want to let you know that it's well-received. Leaders are educated and trained in things they can take back to their community. And many of the leaders have taken some of those trainings back into their communities. Some of the leaders you have heard from have shared about the Block by Block even on the Housing Committee meeting. So that's currently where we are. And again, my name is Denise Blackson. I'm a very active commissioner, and I want to share my phone number, two oh two, two five zero, four four five one. Feel free to reach out to me or get my email off the website. Thank you.
If anyone have any questions regarding resident services for Commissioner Blackson? Thank you, Commissioner Blackson.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clay, by Nantucket.
Yes, so we actually held our meeting yesterday, March the eleventh. And we had, one of the items that came up in discussion is a resolution that I guess we'll present later, but we'll talk about that later. Other than that, we talked about some achievements of the Office of Financial Management during the report, as well as some upcoming things that we expect to happen this year as well. As you all know, the director had laid out his plan. And so we went through the Office of Financial Management, some of the items related to the recovery plan for the Office of Financial Management, and some of the things that have been achieved thus far, including the fact that the FY twenty-one through FY twenty-three financial audits were completed. There was a launch of an online system for vendor payments, financial training to enhance staff efficiency. So a number of achievements that took place in Q three, as well as some Q four achievements, finalized implementation of the improved payroll system, streamlined accounts payable. So a number of achievements that were brought out during the meeting. We also spoke about, a little bit about the financial audit that was contracted by the OIG. That audit is nearing completion, so we're expecting to have a meeting with some of the members of the committee and the auditors to hear about the report. What we understand thus far is that there were some things that were noted, some challenges noted in the report, but those are things that we kind of know. The Office of Financial Management has been saying, you know, that they have stepped into a lot of issues and have been working feverishly to address a lot of those issues. And so we expect to see a number of those issues highlighted in this audit. But really, our position is that, you know, we have issues and we are working to clean those up. And I think this audit will also help kind of direct our attention so that we know where some of these issues are, and where we may need to also look into having some outside resources also come in. So those were the majority of the things that we discussed. And again, along with the contract that we speak.
Any questions for Commissioner Clay?
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
General Projects, we will not have any resolutions to present this month. And so at our last meeting about two weeks ago, we spent and have been talking for some time about Greenleaf, which as folks know is a large project that we've been eager to move on for quite some time, predating pretty much everybody in this room. And the project's a little bit stuck. The team is looking at really creative solutions, and I know is eager to speak soon, I think on the soon side with the resident council and begin to update them and get their feedback and make sure that they're aligned, because I know that that's an important voice that we want to make sure that they are supportive of the direction we want to go. But I think the idea is just to find a creative way in this challenging market to finally begin to make some progress there. Hopefully, we'll be coming with more information on that and eventually a resolution on that in the months to come.
Any questions for Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. That concludes these committee reports. Next, we'll have, we'll consider the resolutions. And so our first resolution, twenty five dash oh five, to authorize the execution of a contract for management of the Paper Carlsberg parking lots. We just heard the overview from the team. Unless there are any additional questions or information needed, I think we can transition into a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Sure. Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lee?
Yes. Residents approved.
Our next resolution is twenty five dash oh six, to authorize the execution of contracts for DCHA financial audit for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Heather Mueller, CFO. So this one is a little bit of a unique situation. We actually took this to two committees. We took it to operations, and we took it to our finance committee. He's been working with me every month. And so we put this solicitation out late last summer. We kind of held off on it a little bit until we got through this OIG audit. And so we have a draft. Now we're ready to select our auditor so we can move forward with our single audit phase of the audit that's required by HUD. And so we had two respondents, and we selected this SB and company. And we would like to do one option, one year with two option years. And so, you know, we would engage them for one year, see how it goes, and determine, you know, over the summer, if we need to put this back out, basically. I'm happy to answer any questions, or Dr. Pettigrew, or Amy, if you want to add anything else.
Me. Good.
Heather, can I just sort of, I just think it might be helpful to get a couple pieces of information on the record, because you could see people wondering about this, because my understanding is this is the same firm that was done the OIG audit.
Correct.
When we put this solicitation out, they applied like anybody else, right? I mean, there's nothing we could do to prevent them from applying, so they were, they applied, they were an applicant. We only received two applications, you said. Do you have any sense of why this one scored higher than the other?
So, of course, I didn't see the scoring, so I don't know, Jean.
Yeah, maybe it made more sense to Jean.
Yes, so we score technical and we also score cost. And so their technical proposal scored the highest, as well as the cost proposal scored the highest of the possible points because of the dollar amount.
Okay.
And so that is what put them as the highest ranking for this.
And I'll just add too that they had actual single audit experience with other housing authorities. The other respondent only worked with one housing authority, and it was only for an HR benefits audit. They did not have the single audit experience.
And I mean, I think, is it fair to say that we were somewhat maybe surprised and disappointed that we didn't get more than two applicants? We would have preferred.
He's for three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We were very disappointed.
Yeah. And then probably, surmising, but probably says something about people having questions about the state of our turnaround.
Correct.
Which I think is.
It was. And Commissioner Murphy, if I can.
Please.
So we also do an outreach when we receive, you know, such a small amount of proposals, do an outreach just to, you know, inquire why, more of a survey type to understand why. So we did reach out to other firms, and unfortunately, no other firms were willing to submit, yes.
Okay. And a couple more questions. One, this firm didn't know, this process has been kind of on hold, right? So while the firm was finishing their OAG audits, just make it, let's make it very clear. They didn't know that they were, they didn't know where the process stood.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Unless they're listening to this meeting, they actually still don't know, right?
Because they did not send out any notices to let them know who was awarded or any of that.
We wanted to give, you know, the committees a chance to, you know, talk everything out, make sure you guys were comfortable with the decision.
I think that's important to get on the record. And the other thing is, you mentioned this before, I think, but we have deadlines with HUD coming up. So we need, this is something we don't really, we need an outside auditor.
So the single audit is due to HUD by June thirtieth, so it must be approved by the board in either May or June at the latest for us to submit to HUD by June thirtieth.
Okay. And this is, it's a three-year audit with a one-year and a two-year option, right? So if for some reason it didn't feel like we were making progress or we're hitting, we could, for any reason, we could say we're going to rebid this.
Correct, and we can do that this summer and still have time to get someone in for next year.
Great, okay.
If they respond.
And I think despite how it looks, it's actually a good thing that they supported us with, and they are so familiar with our work and our books, so.
Because they're behind already because of the time.
Yeah, we're behind already.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I had.
Are there any additional questions for Resolution twenty five dash oh six?
I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Sure. Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lee?
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Okay. Next, we'll consider Resolution twenty five dash oh seven, the authorized publication of the Eighth Emergency and Proposed Regulations of the District of Columbia Housing Authority's Administrative Plan.
Okay, so I'm Amy Glassman, general counsel. This is, so as folks know, we've been in the process of revising both the ACOB for the public housing program as well as the administrative plan for the voucher program. During that time, we've been extending the existing regulations via emergency. So they are, the current regulations are slated to expire tomorrow, so we're looking to extend them one more time. You know, I will say that, and we, you know, we are getting ready to issue both the proposed ACOB and then the admin plan shortly. The ACOB should be published on Friday. And the ACOB, and we've agreed, the advocates have made a request that we stagger the issuance of these for public comments and that they have added, they and others have adequate time to really review. So the admin plan is, the updated admin plan would be scheduled to go in approximately a month so that we've staggered those periods. But, but so this is, this is a continuative, this request to extend the emergency regulations for the existing admin plan unchanged is being presented to the board today. But the next time we come to the board on the admin plan, it will be with the updated, updated regulations.
Any questions for general counsel?
What's your degree of confidence? We all here aid, and I think we all kind of.
It's, I see Commissioner Silla's face, so I also.
No, no, I wasn't even on that. I was going to jump on a different kind of lineup thinking.
Like, what's the over under?
We, we, we're, I mean, we have, we have been meeting very regularly for months, you know, on this. So it is, it is.
At some point, we were still waiting on HUD. At this point, we can't wait.
Right, I mean, we made a decision a couple months ago, HUD basically said, "We're not going to be issuing you any more comments." And so we said, "Okay," to the races, right? And so, you know, we're going to, we're going to go. So no, it really is going to come out. You know, we have, you know, Dr. Dowd is four something hundred pages. It's shorter now. But yeah, fingers crossed, maybe only three ninety-nine. But no, it is going to come out. I mean, I think one of the, the real, I think, challenge here is that to comply with the DC regs and the HUD regs, it is going to be a bit of a process to, when we issue the new admin plan as well as the ACOB, because essentially, with respect to both of them, we're going to put them out for a minimum of thirty days for what I'll call the HUD public comment period. After that, after we review the comments and incorporate them as needed, we will come to the board and ask for the board to approve the new policy as emergency and proposed regs so that we can go ahead and start to implement it. That will start a new thirty-day public comment period. We will then consider those comments that are received and then come back to the board to ask them to approve the policies final, and then we will be out of the emergency phase. I will confess, I don't know if this number is, if when we come back, if that's the ninth emergency or if it's sufficiently changed that we go back. I mean, I don't know the number.
But if there is a nine, we will be down, if we have to renew these again, it will be because we're just not quite to the finish line on the new ones.
Exactly.
It will be that we haven't started.
It's because we're in the public comment period, and frankly, you know, if we get a ton of comments, we need to be thoughtful about it and, and consider them. And, you know, we've been.
And you've been, I mean, I know you've been working with residents, you've been getting a lot of feedback.
We've been working with the advocates. We meet with the advocates monthly on this. There is going to be, you know, we, as part of the rollout of the proposed ACOB and then as well as the admin plan, you know, we will be meeting with the residents. We're going to look to get on the resident council meetings to really meet with every single, you know, resident council. We meet with the citywide. There's a public hearing. You know, we're working on materials that will be not three hundred ninety-nine pages, you know, that are more comprehensible in terms of the key changes, you know, that sort of thing. So there will be a lot of, I, I, you know, there will always be a lot of lively discussion, I'm sure, because there's, there's a lot in both these documents.
Right.
So can I? I'm sorry, I've been jumping at the bits. My apologies. So, I mean, you, you already know that a homeless preference is really critical. I, and this is not just for the vouchers, but I would like to ensure that we have a conversation around a homeless preference for the public housing. That's also the public housing waitlist. In, for homeless services right now, the consolidated RFP is focused on preserving affordable housing because of the state of affordable housing in the district. That means there, we are not going to be seeing a future pipeline of site-based housing for people experiencing homelessness. The district is pivoting to support DC Housing Authority and to prioritize the DC Housing Authority as part of the rental omnibus, the rental act. And so that means as the city is pivoting its development dollars and really focusing on the DC Housing Authority portfolio, the opportunities for site-based housing that's dedicated. the opportunities for site-based housing that's dedicated to homeless services is, is narrowing. Um, and so this, uh, and then, you know, in terms of local vouchers and LRSP, future allocations of LRSP with the federal government threatening a one billion dollar cut and our future for budgets like looking very tight, I don't know what that's gonna look like for people experiencing homelessness. So I cannot emphasize enough that, um, people who don't have housing are not going to have future options for dedicated housing resources. We really need to collaborate to think about what it means to have a homeless preference, including for public housing. Uh, Amy, I don't know what the, um, legality around that is, whether there's a precedent for that, what kind of considerations are, are needed. Um, I'm pretty sure the residents, for example, have to be on board and we have to engage them. So I would like, as part of thinking about homeless preference, understanding what it, what it would take to ensure that we also have a homeless preference for public housing units, not just for, um, the federal voucher waitlist.
Okay, I mean, I will, do you want to talk about that now or are we?
I mean, if we could talk about it in committee and if there's a way in which you can engage, um, the homeless services continuum of care, the ICH as part of those conversations, so that you're not just meeting with the advocates that are coming to you, but you are also coming to our table, our planning table, and talking to our community about that. I would greatly appreciate that.
Any additional commissioner questions, feedback? I think we can move to a motion.
So, um, second.
Sure. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted.
No problem.
Usually you don't mute me.
Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Lee?
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Okay.
I think we, um, are now ready for Commissioner time, uh, where the commissioners will have the opportunity to highlight thoughts or concerns. Um, do we want to start with our commissioners who are remote?
Yes, I would like to say, uh, on a very positive note here, I'm over in the, uh, Georgia Avenue area where Port Morton is, and it really looks good. The, the rebuild, the renovation, the rebuild of it. And I, I go by there most every day and I've been doing that for a long time. But I want to give, uh, everybody, uh, on the Housing Authority staff that's involved in it and others, I'll be looking forward to a ribbon cutting soon, I guess, I don't know. But it's, it's really a, a big, big improvement and it, it really looks great. It blends in right with the neighborhood, et cetera, and it's exciting to see that, uh, newness there. And I, I want to, I want to congratulate the staff and director and everybody, board, uh, on that. And, you know, it's a, it's a very good, it's a very good thing. So, thank you.
This is Commissioner Harris. Um, I'm not sure, but, um, I've recently been receiving phone calls from uh, rapid rehousing recipients who have not received, um, acceptance letters for the vouchers. Um, they have gone through in a process of an appeal and there has been, um, no communication since. Do we have a, a contact that will, um, be able to be forwarded to them so that they could, um, at least get some clarity on regards of if this appeal is going through or they'll be considered for a voucher? Yes, sure.
It was Black, uh, Commissioner Blackson.
It's Harris.
It's Harris. It's Anton Shaw. I'll reach out to you after this and I'll get your contact, those individuals.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hi, this is Commissioner, oh, were you done, Ronnie? Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am, I'm done, thank you.
My apologies. This is Commissioner Blackson. I just wanted to, to send a shout out to, um, Keith and his team for their support with my initiative and being there for the residents to be able to answer questions, um, that they are concerned about. And I also want to recognize, uh, Officer Resident Services with Fashad Tower and Mr. Harris with their support also for my initiative. And special shout out to Mr. Anton Shaw, who I call almost every day, day and night with consumer concerns. Able to assist me. I really appreciate it, Mr. Shaw. I know you're one person, but I definitely appreciate your response in a timely manner. I, I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Commissioners here in the room, uh, do you want to start on the side of the table? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Silla?
Um, first and foremost, thank you to the ombuds person, uh, Wayne Waller. Thank you to Hamara Gabrias for representing DC Housing Authority at yesterday's ICH full council meeting. It was great to meet, uh, our ombuds person, our ombudsman in person. Um, and it was great to catch up with him and to recognize that it worked very well, um, to have both DHS and, and DCHA, uh, supporting clients, um, and able to, um, um, answer questions in real time and coordinate between, um, one another to make sure that, uh, clients were taken care of. I think it, um, seeing both DHS and DC Housing Authority in the same space, having consumers walk up who were confused about what part of the process that they were in, having Wayne, um, Waller immediately be able to triage with the DHS team and to resolve that in real time, I think maybe speaks to what some of, um, what, um, Kelly McShane, what, um, Andy, and I'm gonna butcher his last name because I'm so bad with names. Um, what, what to me Kelly and Andy are asking for when they're looking for a summit, when they're looking for representatives from providers, from DHS, from DC Housing Authority to come together and think through the process is how do we build this, um, connectivity that allows for answers in real time to, uh, clients' concerns? Um, and so, um, Chris, I know earlier you said when it came up, maybe this is something good to discuss in Commissioner time. So I, I'm reflecting on the interaction and how wonderful it was to have both DC Housing Authority and DHS there in real time to solve some problems. So, um, because clients don't necessarily know what part of the steps they're in and why something is stuck. And it feels like our providers are also saying they don't know where something is stuck and why. Um, so it, it feels like this is, this is why people are calling for a summit. How can we better understand the process? How can we, um, resolve some of the unnecessary and extra steps in the process? Um, so.
Well, yes, can I go on a turn?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think a lot of us in this room have known Kelly for a long time. Um, and she has been around the city, she's a reasonable voice, she's, you know, not someone who says irresponsible things. So when she says those things, I'm thinking, huh, something seems a little off here. And I guess I just wonder, I don't know what the answer is, it's not, I'm not trying to micromanage anybody, but I guess I just would love your thoughts, Anton could weigh in, but, you know, I mean, some kind of, some way to identify some of these pain points that people are feeling that identifies. Or, I mean, she threw out some very specific ideas. I don't know the regs well enough to know when she says, well, HUD requires it, but, you know, but DC doesn't, why would we require it? Like, I, 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 I think it's a fair question. It also may be that, like, we have one system for both that requires it. And so we have, I mean, I can see there being some issues that at least a, an explanation could address. But I, I guess, not meaning to put you on the spot, but I guess, do you have any thoughts on ways that we could, whether it's getting everybody in a room or some way to address some of that feedback? Because I, I think it's worth us hearing that. I don't, I don't, that's not, that's not somebody being melodramatic. So.
After the oversight hearing, I, you're there for eight hours, you gotta listen, right?
Yeah.
And I've said to Robert White the time, I said, listen, I need to do more outreach with the advocates directly, um, because they come to the hearing and they deal with the staff. But sometimes it's good for me to hear what their concerns are and what their ideas are, so that then we can incorporate it and it will just trickle down. I mean, I know the staff works hard and I've heard their version of it. And even when we met with, uh, Acting Director Pierre, uh, the first time about a month ago, and she come to us and said, well, you know, my understanding is that you guys are holding on six hundred applications over there. So when we go back to our staff, it's like, no, it's only three hundred because the other three hundred are incorrect or incomplete.
And what would be great is, right, if everybody's in the room and having that conversation live.
Yes.
And then saying, why does my system say six hundred and your system says that's not the case? Or where are we going wrong?
The plan is, that's why we're gonna start meeting every two weeks and we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this at a high level and make sure that the staff understand that they need to be a part of this fix. Because you're right, in the, at the end of the day, we should be able to solve this. I mean, to, to the point where people can truly understand and they don't.
Yeah.
And, and I'll take some of that blame because, you know, I, I try to give the staff their, 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 their room to grow and develop and figure it out. Um, and we had a meeting when I first got here with some of the DHS staff. I remember it clearly. Um, and, you know, I did the opening, I talked about, I'd heard the concerns and I wanted them to get in the room and all of them to figure it out. And I thought this is where we were, but then as time goes on, I gotta tell you, uh, the old guy, yeah, remember my grandfather was always saying, right? He's like, you know, fatigue make cowards of us all. And he's, he's like, you know, so as our staff back and, you know, the, the mad rush comes, I think people sometimes they revert back to bad habits. And they stop doing certain things because they're sort of getting overwhelmed is what I sort of saw it as. But here we are now and we're gonna fix it.
I appreciate that. I also think there's just, there are more banal explanations where people aren't empowered. And somebody says, why do we do it that way? And somebody says, well, could we do?
Yeah.
Right? And you kind of need somebody in the room to say, well, do we have to? The answer may be yes, but the answer may be no.
I, don't tell you, I hate that. I told staff when I first got here, don't tell me that you're doing something because that's the old, that's always the board that way.
Yeah.
I hate that answer, so, yeah.
So I, I was gonna save this until after the meeting, but I think what I heard from Kelly and from Andy is the need really for facilitator to lean sing, lean Six Sigma, the whole process.
Right.
So that, yeah, so that everybody walks away.
Right.
We're doing exactly what they need to do and only what they need to do to make it more efficient and effective. So before you guys, um, go and have this big summit, I think you really need to make sure that you have a facilitator there that will be able to weed out some of those unnecessary steps. So that when you walk away, everybody knows this is what you're gonna do and this is what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
And this is how we will get it done in three steps opposed to twenty steps.
And, and, and you mentioned, I agree. And you mentioned data. I mean, I think it would, lots of times we, lots of times we have in our heads why things are the way they are until we get data and it turns out that they're not often the way they are, right? And, and so I just think if we had more data around timelines and I don't know how good our systems are, but if we could actually spit, spitting out, the conventional wisdom is this, but that's not what our data says, right? For good or for bad, sometimes it's for.
And I'll just add, we've, we've been, you know, as Director said, we've been meeting with DHS and the team also meets with them more frequently than I. So our last meeting is, we're trying, we're information sharing to get the data from beginning to end. So where is the breakdown? How much average days here, there? Then it'll show on, is it our side, is it their side, wherever? And then we'll work closely, but also getting in the room, exactly as you said, there's, you know, I heard someone talk about, uh, the income verification. Federal actually does require income verification for child support, but maybe it's not to the magnitude that we're asking on the local side. So we need to look at that and maybe if it's a no rise paper, we need to get rid of it. So we'll, we'll, we'll look at that, but it does ask for verification of income of that as well. But, um, hopefully, working with, um, Jenna and our Director Pierre soon, we should be able to have that timeline of average days down from beginning to end. Because right now their system has one thing, our system has what we do, they have what we do. And then we.
That's, could I, maybe next meeting, could you guys just sort of give us a short, something like, we've been meeting, here's how it went. Here's where we're still going. I mean, I'm not saying, yeah, it's all gonna matter.
Yeah.
But just some kind of update on where that's going.
For, for our committee, I really would appreciate your data on, you know, just like I requested.
We can give you our data on.
The, you know, everything that you're already providing for HCVP that we can and should be looking at for LRSP, I think is like a good start. Another piece that's really important to understand is your process steps, right? Because then we also know whether we're looking at the right metrics or not. Because if we don't have metrics for all the process steps, that tells us there's gaps in our data and there's potentially like places where there are delays that we're not aware of.
We have flowcharts, so we'll have Hammer provide you the flowchart because we do have that.
I would rather see this thing worked out, mapped out and then see that process opposed to seeing all the steps that you're like doing now. Because I don't think all of them may be necessary. So that's why I really encourage you guys to think about having somebody to come in and look at that whole process and figure out what you really need to do.
Okay.
Right? Lean Six Sigma, that process. And then we don't walk away with these are the major steps that we need to do. This is all we need to do and this is what we should be doing opposed to everything.
Okay.
Commissioner Clay?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna bring up, uh, Ricky Pettigrew mentioned it and I said awesome when he said it, but I do want to just stress again, I really do think it's, it's great to hear when everyone from the apprentice program is actually hired and placed into chat. Um, I think it's great when you have these training programs. I think it's even better when these training programs can actually translate into employment. So, uh, I really do want to commend you on that. I think that's, that's something that should be pointed out. So, congratulations.
They're happy too, but they, I'm coming, I said, you all got jobs. They're like, ah, the room erupted, man.
That's awesome, so congratulations.
Well, Director, um, thank you to you and your team. Um, there are so many different moving pieces, so many different activities that you all are working on. And I just want to commend you for moving the ball forward on the things that you are and continuing to work on the things that still require a lot of work. It's not easy work, it's very fatiguing. I think just to piggyback a little bit on, I think what you were alluding to, Keith, um, Director Pettigrew, when you're doing so much all at the same time, just an acknowledgement of how fatiguing the burnout. Um, we're all humans, um, we need sleep, we need water, we need food, we need rest. Um, and so I just want to acknowledge and just say thank you to you and in the entire staff here at the agency. It's not easy work and, and again, it's, it's burnout level work. And so thank you for what you do. And I also want to piggyback off of, um, Commissioner Jones's recommendation for Six Sigma. Um, I think sometimes what happens, you do a summit or, you know, some activity and people struggle with execution. And I think that the process could benefit from a facilitator identifying, um, what the steps are and who the owners are, the roles and responsibilities. Because, or else you're just, it's another thing on that list of all the things you have to do dealing with burnout and fatigue. You know, it's an important thing that needs to be done, um, along with the two million other important things that need to be done. Um, so I just want to acknowledge those two things.
Thank, thank you. And just for the record, my staff don't sleep. Because I'm calling in the middle of the night, they'll tell you. I'll text them and call it and email and.
Put it in my phone or send it.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments, questions, feedback, um, before we move into a German?
The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-five at one PM via Zoom. Information regarding the viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at www.dchousing.org.